Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, we're talking about a sequence of tests that our freshmen, sophomores, and our juniors took on November 8th of this school year. The freshmen took the Explore test, the sophomores took the Plan, the juniors took a Practice ACT, which we scored in high. The Explore and Plan tests we send out in the school year. So, let me introduce you to the class of 2017, the current freshman. And it's broken out by four types. In other words, kind of sifting and sorting the 314 students that took this test to kind of see how they shake out, stack up against the national norms. Okay? And as you can see, it's a pretty strong class. If you look at the composite score, 76 percent of the students are scoring at or above the 50th percentile. And this has been a very good pattern that we've seen, it kind of went back over the data over the last five years. And this is a pretty strong class. The class that preceded them, the current sophomores, a little bit higher, but very much in parity as far as being prepared to come into high school. Now, that's one way of looking at their scores and their data. But you may have noticed, reading articles, looking at the school report card, there's a lot of attention given to college readiness benchmarks. The Explore, the Plan, and the ACT are linked. They're produced by the same organization. And they're kind of set up on a similar scale. The highest score on the Explore is a 25. The highest score on the Plan is a 32. Then the maximum score on an ACT is 36. Now, we usually have few freshmen that will score a perfect 25. Once in a while, we get a couple of perfect 32s on the Plan. And as far as I know, we only had one student that had a perfect 36 on the ACT. So, the tests get more rigorous as we go along, and they get more difficult, more challenging. So, Tony, if you go to the next slide, if you go on the ACT website, you can find out exactly what the benchmarks are for each test. So, for example, Explore can be taken as an eighth grader. This is what we use to kind of place our students, our incoming eighth graders for next year. Or you can give Explore at the ninth grade level. Giving the Explore at the ninth grade level when the freshmen took the test, the benchmarks would be to score 14 in English would indicate that that student is probably going to be successful when they take their English composition course in college. So, they have statistical analysis that would indicate a freshman scoring a 14 has a very good chance of being successful in college or English. Okay? Down the line, a student as a freshman scoring an 18 would successfully pass college algebra. The benchmark for reading is based on a typical social studies class that you take in college where there will be a lot of reading. The benchmark for reading is 17. And you'll notice, science is higher than the rest at 19, meaning that a student who got a 19 in science would probably be successful in passing college biology. You might wonder, well, 14 for English and 19 for science, what's up with that? But think about it, the one course that every student takes when they go to college is some kind of incorporated course. If you're a liberal arts major, you're probably not going to sign up for college biology with freshman year. You may take a different kind of science depending on your interests, but if your path is going toward liberal arts, you might take up a science selected that would not be as rigorous as biology. Okay? But everybody takes college English, no matter what your majors can be. Then if you look going along the path, the benchmarks, of course, increase over time. So, when you're looking at the Plan benchmarks, now, Plan is for 10th graders only. Okay? It goes up by one point. So, we get 15, 19, 18, 21. And then when you go over to the ACT benchmarks, there's quite a leap there. Okay? This would be the benchmarks, and each of those areas indicates success in college by the time you're taking your ACT as a junior or senior. Make sense? So, when you look at it from that perspective, we'll go back to the freshmen, and we'll see how they stack up against those Explore benchmarks. Whoops.
That's the right one?
That's the right one. All right, that tall column right there, okay. Remember the English benchmark for the Explore as freshman is 14. 78 percent of the students scored at that benchmark or above. So, that was by far their strongest area, off the lowest benchmark, but by far their strongest area. When you go to math, the benchmark is 18. 48 percent of the students are there. And if you look across, it's pretty similar. Math, reading, science, they're at above 50 percent of the class at the time that the freshman being college ready, according to the college readiness standards. Okay? Any questions about that? Okay. Then we gave the sophomores the Plan test, a different set of benchmarks, but this is what the current sophomore class would look like. If you go over to the composite side, you'd see 78 percent of the students are at or above the 50th percentile. And only 2 percent are in that column we call academic warning or the bottom category. So, that's pretty good. And it's a nice composition for that class. But then if we look at that group of students over time, what they look like relative to the benchmarks when they were freshmen, and then how they look with the new benchmarks as sophomores? Tony, if you go to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's talk about this. Let's look at the quartiles compared to where they were on their Explore test as freshmen, and then now what that same class looks like, the students that matched on the Plan test. And what we like about that is a reduction in the number of that lowest quartile from 6 percent to 2. So, we have about 78 percent of our students, again, above 50th percentile in the Plan, and fewer students in the bottom quartile from one year to the next. And we gave the test at a similar time. You know, there was a time when we gave these tests in September, but for different reasons, we rescheduled them a little further into the school year. So, they took their Explore test at least on November 6th, when they were freshmen, and then they took it at the end of the year. So, very similar timing, same stage, probably it would equate to like the first quarter of the school year at the time they took the test. Okay, now if you go to the next one. All right, this is what benchmark-wise the groups look, okay? If you take the sophomore class, the class of 2016, and you look at the blue line, it shows where they were relative to the benchmarks at the freshman level. Okay? And then if you see where they are relative to different benchmarks on the Plan, the lines are pretty consistent, a very similar pattern. They scored a few more percentage points, meaning the benchmark as sophomores under English, and a couple of points less in the other subject areas. So, they're kind of proceeding on course. Okay. So, now we're going to look at the seniors, okay? Because the Practice ACT is really informational data. You send it home to the parents, it kind of informs them if they want to think about taking a ACT prep course. Their ACT that counts for them isn't given until April of their junior year. So, now we're looking at our current seniors, the students who are going to graduate this year, and how they progressed from Explore to Plan to their ACT that they took when they were juniors. And you'll see, they have a very similar pattern. They showed improvement from Explore to Plan. And then when you get over to the ACT column, you'll see a different pattern. And I guess I would take you back to the benchmarks to go to the next slide, Tony. That's a heavy lift. You're looking at three points of growth from sophomore year to junior or senior year. And they took the ACT as juniors. For a lot of the students, it's the first time they took the actual ACT. A lot of our students kind of take that as, okay, that's my baseline. And depending on what their goals are, where they want to go to school, they'll take as many as four or five more ACT exams. Especially, they'll have the benefit as a senior of a little more instruction, especially in math and science, that will help them probably score higher. Also, I want to tell you, all of these scores reflect every single student. It's not just given to college students, it's given to all our students, some of them with accommodations. Sometimes we bring students that are receiving instruction at another building, we bring them here to take the test. It's a pretty honest reflection of all the students that we deal with across the spectrum of abilities and talents. Okay? Any questions? Interesting. Okay, so I meant to talk a little bit about the next slide, but I don't want to steal Tom's thunder. And I know you have the copy in front of you, and I don't know, you probably can't see it very well, but if you would just kind of look at the middle of the graph. All right, I want to point out to you, we're looking at data for two different groups of students. And we're kind of comparing Lamont High School and how our students perform compared to schools in our area, our conference, kind of a list that we have put together over the years to kind of see where we are relative to other schools that we consider our peers. All right? Starting with the meets, exceeds, and going to the right, that data reflects how the current seniors did on their Prairie State Achievement exam. Okay? It tells the percentage in the first column, meets and exceeds, kind of an overall percentage of the students who scored in the meets and exceeds range. And then it kind of breaks it up by the reading, and math, and science areas. Okay, so that's the current seniors. Now, if you go to the left, beginning with graduation rate, the percent of college ready in ACT, those were the students we handed diplomas to last May. They would be the class of 2013. So, I think it's important to recognize two different groups of students. Current senior on the right, graduated students on the left, which kind of makes sense because you can't get a graduation rate for kids who haven't graduated yet. So, it also reflects too, the best scores that a student was able to achieve from the first ACT test that they took to any subsequent tests that they may have elected. So, the ranking is based focusing on the percent of meets and exceeds compared to the other schools. And then depending on what you're looking at, and Tom will talk more about that, you kind of see where we fit into the scheme of things. One other thing I want to bring your attention to is the percent of college ready. Okay, now here's where it gets a little confusing, because I've just talked to you about college readiness benchmarks, a certain number, a certain score that would indicate you're statistically likely to do well in a particular course in college. But when you go to check on our school report card, or any school's report card for that matter, at the high school level, you're going to have a statistic called the percent of college ready. And here's the definition. This is the definition that comes from the state board that's on school report cards. That would be the percentage of the students that attained a 21 composite or more. Okay, so that's a different number than the benchmarks. It's kind of confusing, but that's the statistic you see there. So, if you go down that column of college ready, that means that percentage of that senior class that got a 21 or more. And that would be for students that have already graduated. Okay? Make sense?
And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but then doesn't ACT have a different definition of college and college ready?
They do.
Could you explain that?
They do. They take each one of those benchmarks. Tony, if you wouldn't mind going back one slide. Okay, when they talk about college ready, they're going to look at ACT, and they're going to determine the percentage of kids that got an 18 in English, and the percentage of kids that got a 22 in math, 22 in reading, 23 in science. That's college ready from the ACT perspective. And then what they'll do is they'll look and see, okay, of all those students, how many of them hit all four targets? Okay, in other words, they met every benchmark, and therefore, they're well-rounded, if you want to say. Our percentage at that perspective is lower. Okay? It was not 63 percent, it was more in the range of 35 percent. A little harder to do because you have a lot of students that have strengths in one area and perhaps not in the other. So, it's kind of an all or nothing thing. You either hit all four, or you don't. If you hit all four, you get in that overall college-ready group. And if you miss one, maybe you're a little bit off in science or math or whatever your weaker area is, you're not reflected in that percentage. So, actually, I kind of think what the state board has chosen as a college readiness number is probably more on target, because 21 will get you into a very good state book private college or university, have good grades, go with it, all the way through. It's a lot, I mean, it's a goal for us to try to have. Our kids hit the benchmarks in all four, but I don't know about your children, but mine were not that great in science and math. They were more in love with words, kind of like their mother, I guess. And so, that would have been problematic to see them perform at the same level in math as they may have in English. Okay? All right.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. Wanted to report on the opportunity that I had to attend the national conference recently in December. There were a lot of great topics that took some extensive class work in, one of which involved field safety, which I'll get into a little bit later, but also a variety of different programs for athletic-related technology, ethics, media relations, retaining coaches, mentoring coaches. It was just an awesome opportunity to sharpen the sword, so to speak, and I really appreciate that. Probably the most valuable experience, though, was working in the field safety aspect. As you know, with concussions and the concern for youth, particularly for youth football and football in general, field safety has taken on a whole nother dimension. And so, I took advantage of an opportunity to become certified in field safety. Now, that might sound like a lot, but there's only 10 people certified in Illinois right now to go out and assess a turf field or a grass field. It's a trend that's going to come about four or five years. We're ahead of it, but at LaMonte, we stay ahead of trends. We don't react, we try to stay ahead of it. So, with that in mind, what that really allows us to do is to be able to analyze where our turf field stands further with industry standards. There's an organization called TI Turf Industry there, the organization that certifies the field testers. And it's going to be a trend that affects the high schools, it's going to affect the park districts, it's going to affect youth programs, and it's basically going to come down to people being accountable for their own facilities. For example, and then vary their future today is going to be gone where a new program can show up and just play on a hard field, a field that never gets watered, a field that hasn't been taken care of, a field that just needs some overall maintenance. And as a result, people are going to be held accountable at very high levels for the safety that they tend to maintain. And it's record-keeping, it's using apparatuses. Field safety is measured by one of two methods. An expensive method is called using a tri-X missile. And it's basically a large bottle rocket, if you will, made out of metal, about four inches in diameter, about three feet tall. And you drop it, it's calibrated, you drop it, and depending on the hardness of the surface, will give you a reading. And the industry standards will tell you and dictate how often you take those readings, which you could do it once a year right now, you can do it six times a year, but eventually they're going to probably zero win on the amount of times that you take it. So, I'm hoping that I can use that to our advantage when that time comes, and that we can stay ahead of the curve. We'll have some interesting discussions, as I had with Mary and Tom, and Eric with his association with not just being a football coach, but administrator as well, that that time has come where we have to really stay on top of not just our turf field, but all of our fields. And I really feel confident that we are, but at the same time, we'll have to take calculated readings, and we'll have to work with the park district, and we'll have to kind of collaborate together to work through this process of accountability. So, that was a very exciting, and I know I'll have more information in the future, but I think it's something that I wanted to share with you, it's very important for the future of youth sports. In regards to winter sports update, when we have had school, we've had contests, and we're not unique in that situation. There are a few makeups out there, we're all kind of catching up, and that makes it difficult to take it for granted in the spring, you're going to have rainy days. So, you move it, another day, and you go outside. It's great. But indoor time, you have to reschedule indoor facility, and all that time is accounted for four or five days later, and you have to upset some people. In regards to your feeder programs and other programs, it makes it a little challenging, but I think we've done well, and we've minimized the problems that we've had. Both our basketball teams are remaining competitive. Our boys team is just a game over 500, and our girls are chasing about 500 right now. The girls' pomp program had their highest level of success recently. They earned a second-place finishing conference, which is the highest level that we've been able to achieve. And I think you'll be excited to see the boy-girl dance that will be coming up in a variety of venues, not just at LaMonte High School, but also at the various tournaments that will be hosting. So, our wrestling team is back on the mat, so to speak. I think we're a lot to be proud of, considering where they were last year, it's a step back, and we have managed to win basically 10 out of our 12 contests and conferences, and our numbers are very good at the JAB level. So, our cheerleaders are looking for a chance to bring home another trophy. So, this is a time of year where the indoor excitement really starts to amp up, and I hope you take advantage of the passes that Mary Joe has provided you, or will be providing you. And would you come out and watch us? Come out to the basketball games, it's a great environment, and kids really appreciate seeing you all, seeing you.
With that being said, what about the date for the board if they're interested in working in concession again for their basketball games, when it was last year?
We, when we talked last time, thought maybe that the Hillcrest game would be good, but I don't want, maybe we really want to, rather be in the stands watching that game. So, but we can talk a little bit maybe after the meeting and see if that date still works. That's this Friday. We'll pack the place on the 30th of this month, and so forth, that's a Thursday night. And then we hope to have a packed place and senior night on February 11th for the girls. So, that's coming up too. So, there's opportunities out there, and also note that we're going to have our testing for the heart screening, that'll be on March 14th, so I hope you get that plugged in there. We have some wonderful volunteer events to be able to steps up, and with the database that we already had of 120 volunteers from the last time, and with Tony's help, we've been able to reach out to a lot of people, so we're excited about this opportunity, and we're all very proud of what we do on that particular day. Any questions? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Assistant Principal for Staff and Student Service, Mr. Peter Clark.
Good evening, everybody. Here are really relatively few non-testing school days since our last meeting, so no major events, I think I should be brief, but I want to take this example, this opportunity to provide an update, something we haven't done formally before, of the handbook revisions that you guys put into place for this school year, how they're working out. I think it's really a motivator of the process we use of continuous improvement, is we look at issues, evaluate need, brainstorm solutions, in this case, seek more approval, and then we evaluate as we go on. And, for example, one of the changes you made this year was to dance guest policy, that guests may be no later older than 20 years, okay, instead of 21. And homecoming was a non-issue. Obviously, the reason behind that is we don't feel 21-year-olds, who maybe they purchase alcohol, need to be attending high school dances. No parent complaints at this point, no requests even of that age. So, very smooth. Some changes in the dress and appearance guidelines. Most of it was cleaning up language, but the dominant one was, for the last few years, we bounced back and forth about holes in jeans issue, to below the knee, then to no holes in jeans. It was changed to all clothing with excessive or revealing holes or rips is prohibited. This has become a really fair problem. I think our deans would come in here and thank you individually if they could, because they're not fighting the battle of where the rip is. If it's revealing something, we deal with it. It was actually kind of an unfair thing, because some, you know, obviously, there's a lot of fashion out there, but some kids are working on cars or something, they come from Wilco, they've got a legitimate rip, there's some economic deal where that's the clothes that they have. So, as long as it doesn't reveal anything, it's not an interruption to the school day, it's been a very positive change. And kids aren't abusing it, they're not testing us in a hole. They kind of appreciate, they can buy the fashion, and they're not getting harassed for something that probably didn't need to be. Other schools we've talked to about have gone the same way. The other one was the cellular phone, electronic devices. Remember, we made the switch to a lot of them that have their phones in between class periods and at lunch, before, it was just before and after school. Another non-issue, another better use of dean's time instead of dealing with phone issues. Remember, if a student is still tardy because whether they're texting their boyfriend or girlfriend, or they're going to visit them, there's a consequence for the tardiness. It's not about what's causing them to be that, and it's been a non-issue. Talking to the deans about this, when I posted this last week, they actually said they probably have fewer instances in class, because now if you really got to get that message to your girlfriend, you can do it in between classes, and you don't get in trouble for trying to do it in class. So, they said they've had fewer reports of phone issues in class, and it's probably directly a result of that. We revised the hazy language. Luckily, I think Mr. Young would confirm, we don't intend to have a lot of problems, but it's much clearer. If there was an issue, which we hope there isn't, and our coaches, I know, are very active, making sure that it doesn't occur, and it doesn't happen just in athletics, but that's for predominantly, we have clear language there. One that has come into play a few times is we changed the language in the tobacco policy to include any electronic smoking device, because these cigarettes are very popular right now. Even though we confiscated and consequent students for them before this, it's now clearer in the language. Took one off, they took one off the students a couple of days ago. You know, there's a coolest factor, I think kids think, or what have you, but they're not allowed, and this will go, any tobacco for the first time is confiscated, contacted parents, and it's a Saturday detention. So, that's the smoking issue. Changed the language in the break-in and entering section and the distribution of stolen property, that was related to the stolen test issue from a little year and a half or so ago. Added that, there's also a distribution, so it's not just, you can't steal anything, you can't be passing around or selling stolen goods. Not been an issue since then, thankfully, but it's there. And that was it for those. So, the updates and the changes, and remember, if you go back, this is my 10th year, there are a lot fewer, and there used to be a lot more grammatic. Tony's done a real good job of going over the language of it. We've kind of improved that. So, the clarity of the handbook is there, and I think it's more user-friendly each and every year. So, like I say, it's that idea of, we don't just change it, put it on the shelf and forget about it, we look at it, try to evaluate how effective they are. And we'll do the same thing with the committee coming up early this spring. And we'll do the same thing with the committee coming up early this spring of teachers, parents, students, administrators, and usually a support staff member. And we look at the handbook and what's doing. I charged the deans the last few years to keep me an ongoing, you know, what issues are causing? What are the ones that the parents look at and say, they question the language? And we try and clear that up. One of the things, and it's not a secret how we bring up, is the idea of student lawyering. Yeah, that policy is lawyering, but what's the difference between waiting after school for your ride and lawyering? Students need to be in supervised situations, we all can agree with that. So those are the kind of things we're going to be looking at moving forward. We'll be ready to, probably in May, for next year's changes. The other one is, in confidentiality situation, talk in generic terms. On the twenty-first of December, which was the first day of the break, there was an incident in our North Park lot, one right out in front of the main entrance. Approximately just after 1:00 PM, one custodian noticed a car parked out there that shouldn't be. Shortly after noticing that this car tried to go up and over the embankment on literally the corner of Illinois and Julia Street and ran into the LaMont High School sign several times. I guess fortunately, for all concern, because both damaged to the car, damaged the car, was right in between the two big stone posts. So it wasn't hitting the stone post, it was hitting the sign. It pushed a little bit on its horns, did not knock it off. It's not an electric sign, so that wasn't an issue. The custodian on duty called the police, the police got there while the person was still here. Unfortunately, that person was under the influence of alcohol, as determined by the citation they received. They were arrested. There was no personally injuring anybody, thankfully. It was caught while on the cameras, the police were allowed to review that. Jeff saw that on the camera as well. This person has been notified, they're going to obviously legal consequences, and has been notified by the district via Dr. Tchikner that they're no longer welcome to ever drive on school grounds again until further aforesaid. So they have to make an appeal to do so. Obviously, I'm assuming that they have other restrictions to the driving. And what we could provide them, but that was made.